Hospital Authority Board of Directors Annual Meeting for June 9th, 2016. First, we'll have consideration of the approval of the May 26, 2016 minutes. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of May 26th. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Item three is a consideration of a bond resolution approving the issuance of senior living revenue and refunding bond Series 2016 Friends View Retirement Community Oregon in an aggregate principal not to exceed $50 million.
Madam Chair, we have Doug Go here with us this morning from Bond Council.
Good morning.
To provide any remaining detail necessary and answer any of the questions that the board might have about this final action.
Thank you for being here.
Great. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. As has been noted in front of you today is the final bond resolution for the Friends View refunding and the bond issue has been proceeding very well. We're ready to proceed. We've been proceeding with due diligence with respect to Friends View in terms of the, so that we can give at the time of closing our in-qualified bond opinion that covers two different things. One, the validity and forcibility of the bonds and the, that the bonds are tax exempt because investors are willing, of course, to pay the very low interest rates because the bonds are exempt from taxation both for federal law purposes as well as state-of-organ purposes. So that everything to date is in good order there. Would be happy to answer the bond resolution as has been the case in the past with the authority. Authorizes the Chair and members of the authority to sign their related bond documents including the bond indenture and the loan agreement. Just as a reminder, there is no liability on the part of the county with respect to these bonds, both by statute as well as in all of the bond indenture, the loan agreement, the offering document that is provided to investors, all of bold type makes that very clear. So I think those are the key elements and again would be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin, did you want to speak to the conditions we, that the board had discussed in Section four about the-
Yeah, we, at the board's informal, on Tuesday, we discussed the issuance fee that would be applicable to this transaction. And at that time, there was a consensus among the board to charge 90 cents per thousand dollars of the principal amount of the 2016 bonds that are not related to the refunding of the 2014 bonds. So basically what that says is, is that the fee would be charged only on new money, not on monies that are being used for refinancing purposes. And we got an update from the bankers this morning approximately, so the authorization is up to 50 million. There's approximately 30 million at the moment being refinanced and at this point about 15 million in new money. So at a rate of 90 cents per thousand on just the new money, that would be an issuance fee of $13,500.
Okay.
As opposed to $45,000 on the entire amount.
All right. Any other questions?
Who's handling the sale of the bonds?
Ziegler Securities is the, is the underwriter for the bonds. Ziegler is the leading in the kind of senior living field. They are the leading investment banker in that field, based in Chicago and Milwaukee. But they do, I would say, we've, just closing issue with them on Tulare Plaza next, next week in Portland, but they, they're a very significant underwriter, both in Oregon as well as around the country.
Did they give you any expectation of a premium on the bonds that could possibly give you a few extra dollars?
I, I think the, I haven't seen the latest number runs on those, but the premiums have been, premiums, as you know, in the, in the current market is a very typical sort of structure because investors want, they want the higher yield, as you know. So that, so we've been seeing in the market, often you'll see a 5% coupon, but obviously you'll pay, investors will pay a very significant premium for those so that on a, you know, a bond issue of this size, you might have several million dollars of premium to the commissioner's good question that may be generated. I don't have a precise number and of course that will be determined on the data pricing, but I would, I would, I would expect that it would be very substantial.
It would more than offset the fee that they're paying.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Yeah, no, very good point.
What's the estimated closing date at this point?
I think it's kind of mid, mid to late July. And so we'll be in touch in terms of signing documents and so forth with that, make sure that that works with the, with the schedule of the chair. And we're happy to either do, you know, arrange for signatures down here or if you'd like to come to our office in Portland and, and sign there, either one will work from our perspective.
Commissioner Springer may recall there was a table full of documents for the Chair to sign, so Mary, that will be your honor this time.
All right, look forward to it.
I think we did it in our conference room.
Yep, yep. Happy to do that.
I have a little technical question. I don't know if this is for Kristin or for you. So we, we have now, not to exceed 50 million, but we're at 45. And that additional 5 million, where does that end up if they, if they choose to exercise that? Does that fall into our new monies category and become a fee? If they exercise it or-
I mean, the authority's up to 50 million. I don't know if, if remaining-
So right now we've structured the fee at 15 million.
Right.
If that goes up, it automatically, automatically kicks in that-
So I think that's a, that's a very good question. I think that the, unless those, because of the, the money needed to put in the escrow for the refunding bonds needed to go up substantially, I would think that that would be allocable to the new money, the new money portion. And so I would think there's probably would be some sort of spread, but I think between what I, what I think would be reasonable would be that Friends View, Ziegler as the investment banker would present numbers to the county, detailed sort of allocation of what's new money and, and what's refunding and what the rationale is. I, I expect that if, if, if they did get to that additional 5 mountain, 5 million, there might be a small portion that would be allocable to the refunding, but the most of it would be new money.
All right. So at this time, entertain a motion to approve item three, a consideration of the bond resolution.
Madam Chair, I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consideration of the bond resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Any other business? Well, then at this time, we'll adjourn the Yamhill County Hospital Authority Board of Directors Annual Meeting. It is 9:57. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Good to see you as well.
Good meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Good to see you as well.
Good meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we'll call to order the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners' formal session for June 9th, 2016. And at this time, Lucy, would you join us in the pledge?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time we have set aside for invocation. Commissioner Springer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my privilege this morning to introduce a friend of mine that has served the community for years with a number of different hats. Pastor of the Nazarene Church. He's a veteran and he's been a full-time evangelist for the Nazarene Church with quite an outstanding record and following and currently is the chaplain of the Gospel Mission. So at this time, I'd like to call forward to John David Hicks to come do invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, our God, our Creator, we thank you that you are a God of love, a God of relationships, and you care about each one of us. You told us to pray for our government so that we could live in peace in our relationships. Father, I bring the needs of our government before you and ask you to bless our nation and our county. Grant our leaders discernment and common sense so that they will make strong and effective leaders. Help them today to be, make good decisions that will be helpful and build up our county. For we will be judged by you and how we treat our fellow man. You said, if we need wisdom, we should ask God. We ask you for that wisdom today. Make this government a blessing to the people of Yamhill County. Help us to love one another as you have loved us. In Jesus' name we pray and for his glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastors. Appreciate you being here. This time we have set aside for public comment. It's a 30-minute time period reserved for public comment on any topic other than quasi-judicial land use matters or another topic scheduled for a public hearing. Unless restricted by the Chair or majority of the board, the comment is limited to three minutes per person. Doesn't look like we have anybody who's wanting to make public comments, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Item B, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve item B. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Down to old business, we have none. Other business, we have some add-ons. So the first is item D1, which is consideration of approval of the contract employment agreement between Yamhill County Public Works Department and Jeff Kaiser to provide construction management services retroactive to April 15th, 2016 through July 1st, 2017.
Yes, Madam Chair. I would, this has to do with the getting our property out there at Public Works ready for the new construction of our workshop. And Jeff is, is signing on to do some of that preparation work. So I would recommend approval of this agreement.
What's the dollar amount on that, Stan?
There was a not to exceed, can you help? 10,000.
All right. We have a motion to approve item D1, consideration of approval of the contract of employment between Yamhill County Public Works and Jeff Kaiser. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. The next is a recent add-on and we've received a letter from the, the city of Dayton from their administrator, asking if we would sign on for a letter of support for the city's application for transportation and growth management application. So we've done this in the past and he's just asking that we renew our letter of support.
Yes, and there is a bit of urgency since the application for this grant is due tomorrow. And so that's why it was brought to us as an add-on. They weren't, they said they appreciate the fact that we may not be able to get this done, but I think in, to show that we really want to support our, our cities, it would be incumbent upon us to move forward and support this application.
All right. Motion to approve item D2, which is the letter of support for the city of Dayton for their application for a grant for updating their TSP. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Next item is E, public hearings, and that is the Docket PA-02-14KF. It's a request by the city of Lafayette for the board to adopt Lafayette Ordinance 629, which is a request to expand the Lafayette urban growth boundary by 61.35 acres. 51.29 acres had been previously approved and adopted, and then 10.6 acres was, was added in 2016. And then that would otherwise modify the Ordinance 623, which was required by a DLCD remand. We'll open the public hearing at this particular time. Ken, did you want to respond?
Sure. Yes, this application may look familiar because as you said, the Board of Commissioners added 51.29 acres last year through Ordinance 892, which was adopted in July of 2015. That action was reviewed and remanded by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They found that there was a need to accommodate an additional 93 dwelling units to cover the anticipated 20-year supply. To accommodate these dwelling units, the city of Lafayette identified an additional 10.06 acres to be taken into the UGB. And they've also done some adjustments to the plan, increasing the density of development in one area and reducing the amount of land used to calculate the right-of-way use with other developments. The additional 10.6 acres is located northwest of Abbey Road and John's Landing Road and Jim will point that out in just a moment, and it's in your packet. These actions increased their anticipated dwelling units by 100, as detailed in Jim Jack's memo, which is also in your packet. The only additional testimony I've received since the notice was sent out was a letter from Carol Paddock, which I passed out on Tuesday, that details a request to add a corner of the paddock lot and a peninsula of the property owned by the Rock family. Both of these were requested at the city council meeting and the council decided at that time not to include those. This is a legislative hearing, so you're not bound by the procedure on the wall. And what I would recommend is opening up the hearing and hearing from Jim Jacks, the Lafayette planner to my right, and then opening it up to any others to testify. I should note that the subject request is subject to Yamhill County Goals Policies, ORS 197.298, Oregon Administrative Rule 660-024, and the Lafayette-Yamhill County Urban Area Management Agreement. And this agreement says if the city council and board do not concur on the final decision, then there needs to be a joint meeting held to resolve those differences.
Mr. Jacks?
Thank you, Chair. Basically, as Ken said, the city council took a second look and once the decision from 2015 was remanded back to the city, it was one of those interesting situations that doesn't often occur. Thank you. Because usually when a city has a matter remanded for an urban growth boundary, it's a matter of adding too much land or adding EFU land that's not adequately justified. In this case, the city in 2015 had not added enough land, and so the task for this year was to find either increased density or additional land to accommodate 93 additional dwelling units. And so I'm going to step to the map up here so we can get a real clear idea. And I don't know if the mic will pick up or not. So this is the main portion of the city down here. Abbey Road that goes out of the city, and then over here is just off the airport is Middle Springs Road. And so last year, the city had added this 40-acre area and some other land on the east side of the city that is not part of the issue. But this 40 acres was designated low-density residential, and then when it would come in as an annexation for development, it would get the city's R1 zone with a 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. None of this area up here was added. These three parcels are not part of a subdivision, but all of this is the Abbey Ridge subdivision. And those property owners were submitting testimony that they did not want to be added last year, and they submitted testimony again this year that they did not want to be added. And so what the city has done is added these three properties, and this is Abbey Road again, take in the Abbey Road right-of-way, these three properties, and this portion of the John's Landing Road right-of-way. Then the city looked at this again and said, well, we'll leave it with the low-density residential designation. Then when it comes in for development, it'll go to the R1 zone. But we, as part of assuming how much land would be developed there and how much of that development would be right-of-way, we changed the assumption that 21% of the land would be public right-of-way to 15%. And so that gained a little bit of buildable land. It was nine units, enough land for nine dwellings. And then the third thing is the city took a look at this property here. It turns out that this 40 acres and this 20 acres is all one lot, all under the same ownership. The ownership is a developer. And in the city, this is designated low-density residential on the comprehensive plan map and has had the R1 zone on it. But the idea was, well, if we redesignate it to medium-density residential and re-zone it to R2, then that will have a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. And so doing that, the city gained, I think it was 46 units here, nine units, changed assumption here, and 45 units on these three lots. And that totals a nice round number of 100. And so the need for 93, and the need for additional land to accommodate 93 dwellings has been met. I guess with that, maybe I'll stop in case you have questions.
So the Rocks and the Paddocks, are those the, those that you were making reference to who had come before the city council who wanted their property not to be annexed? Are they, that's not them?
Right. Last year, the Rocks, and the Rocks live here, and Lorraine Paddock with her daughter Carol live here. And last year, the question was, there appears to be some small area here that's about the same height as this, and could that be added? And the council decided, no, they didn't want to because, well, some of the reasons relate to just kind of mechanics. The property owners never submitted anything showing what the elevation of that land is or how much of it would be added, or whether it was this or that or that. It just wasn't enough information for the city council to say, we're comfortable adding this whatever number of square feet is there. And then this year, the council also declined to add that area. New this year is the Lorraine Paddock property, which is here. And this triangle down here, and this is the material that Carol Paddock submitted for her mother, Lorraine. There's a triangular area down here that was suggested to be added by Mrs. Paddock and her daughter. And again, it's similar to this. They do have what appears to be something from a surveyor giving some bearings and distances as to the size that would be added. But it is also one of those situations where we don't know if it's the same height as this. And this land steeply drops down into the heavily tree, East Milliken Creek and Milliken Creek corridors. And so the council, again, declined to add that to the urban growth boundary. Another part of both of these is that when, well, before the recession, there was a planned unit development proposed here, and it basically was up on top. There was a cul-de-sac that came down here with lots looping around, and then the main road over here and a loop here. And so there were lots here and lots here. And then the city council here and the city attorney advised that if a similar development were to come in and the city were wanting to provide some access to this, had it been added to the UGB, and provide some access to this, had it been added to the UGB, then the city would be telling the developer, well, drop a lot and have an easement or whatever to allow access here and down here, drop a second lot to provide access to an easement here. I guess with that, maybe I'll stop in case you have questions.
So the Rocks and the Paddocks, are those the, those that you were making reference to who had come before the city council who wanted their property not to be annexed? Are they, that's not them?
Right. Last year, the Rocks, and the Rocks live here, and Lorraine Paddock with her daughter Carol live here, and last year, the question was, there appears to be some small area here that's about the same height as this, and could that be added? And the council decided, no, they didn't want to, because, well, some of the reasons relate to just kind of mechanics, the property owners never submitted anything showing what the elevation of that land is, or how much of it would be added, or whether it was this or that or that. It just wasn't enough information for the city council to say, we're comfortable adding this whatever number of square feet is there. And then this year, the council also declined to add that area. New this year is the Lorraine Paddock property, which is here, and this triangle down here, and this is the material that Carol Paddock submitted for her mother, Lorraine, there's a triangular area down here that was suggested to be added by Mrs. Paddock and her daughter. And again, it's similar to this. They do have what appears to be something from a surveyor giving some bearings and distances as to the size that would be added, but it is also one of those situations where we don't know if it's the same height as this, and this land steeply drops down into the heavily tree, East Milliken Creek and Milliken Creek corridors. And so the council, again, declined to add that to the urban growth boundary. Another part of both of these is that when, well, before the recession, there was a planned unit development proposed here, and it basically was up on top. There was a cul-de-sac that came down here with lots looping around, and then the main road over here and a loop here, and so there were lots here and lots here, and then the city council hearing, the city attorney advised that if a similar development were to come in and the city were wanting to provide some access to this, had it been added to the UGB, and provide some access to this, had it been added to the UGB, then the city would be telling the developer, well, drop a lot and have an easement or whatever to allow access here, and down here, drop a second lot to provide access to an easement here. So the city declined to add either of those. It's not to say that the property owners could not initiate their own urban growth boundary amendment request sometime in the future, but at least for now, the city council has decided to not include those two areas.
In picking up those nine lots, you took part of the right-of-way. Did that mean you're narrowing the streets considerably to make that adjustment?
Well, we're not that detailed in these long-range planning efforts. You can assume, like if you have a forty-acre chunk of land, that a certain percentage of it will be in public rights-of-way. You don't know exactly how much it's going to be. Some road coming in might be kind of a main road and be a collector with a wider right-of-way. The other roads would be local roads with smaller rights-of-way, and you just don't know what the layout is going to be when the subdivision comes in. So the city is allowed to look at previous subdivisions and determine how much land was in rights-of-way for those, and last year, the city found that one, one of the subdivisions recently before the recession was, I think, twenty-two percent of right, land was in right-of-way, and another was nineteen, and so kind of the average was, I think, twenty-one percent. Well, around the state, the average number is closer to fifteen, eighteen percent, something like that, and so because the city was looking to find land where additional houses could be, the assumption this year is, I think it was fifteen percent, and so we don't know that that's going to be the amount, because when a subdivision comes in, depending on how they lay it out and so forth, they may have slightly more in roads or slightly less in roads.
But generally, regardless of how they lay it out here, you have a right-of-way through there, and so whether it's, a misnomer sometimes is when you narrow roads, you save land, but really, you just make a landscape strip instead of, instead of the roads going to the curb and the sidewalks being at the curb, then you've got a, you've got a landscape strip there, so you're really not doing anything with the property, because the right-of-ways remain the same. You just narrow the streets and not as much asphalt.
Yeah, and it's one of those things where...
It just depends on how, how it's designed, but, but by narrowing the roads doesn't mean that you narrow, you, you gain land. It's a misnomer. You don't gain land.
Yeah, and it's one of those situations where for long-range planning purposes, cities are allowed to make assumptions about certain things, but then when you get around to actually doing a development, well, those assumptions are part of the long-range planning. They're not something that the developer has to comply with, because the city standards for how wide a local road right-of-way has to be, well, that's going to be there in the subdivision. If there, it turns out there's a collector needing to be constructed in that development, then the collector will have a slightly wider right-of-way, and so it seems kind of weird that what actually happens may not be what was assumed, but that's what Oregon law allows in these long-range planning efforts, assumptions, versus once the land is in the UGB, once it gets annexed, once it's subject to the subdivision, then those rights-of-way would be whatever the city code requires them to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Carol Paddock for public comment in opposition to the application. Carol, would you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Carol Paddock, five zero zero one Northeast Mineral Springs Road, Minkville, Oregon. Do you have a few pages in front of you from me?
Yes.
So two issues that I'm here about. One is the zone change in the portion of property that is already within the city. That really didn't receive any airing as far as safety and meeting any, any requirements for a zone change. I know that the state in the remand said that one of the things they could do to meet the higher number of units required is to change, change a zone. So, so that's what they did, but again, there was no airing on safety or anything like that. And so I pulled up some code. You've got a bunch of references where safety is important in this relation. You also have a plat of, not a plat, that's the wrong word, but a plan of the development that was proposed, and it might be the approved one, I'm not quite sure, from earlier, about ten years ago. And you can see that there's just one access, it's a central access ringed by properties all around. There's no access to the forest should a fire break out, nothing like that. The increased, and, and the issue is when vehicles are evacuating, so, so this is ringed, you can see it right there, how the green space, how it's ringed on three sides, a elongated area, only one access out. If a wildfire breaks out in there, that would just be a terrible thing, and we'd have vehicles evacuating and emergency trying to get in, and increasing the density is just going to make that worse, and I just think that the safety aspect should get an airing back at the city level. So that's about the zone change. And then the Rock property, my mother's property, I realize, I, I just happened to think of that at the end, maybe this could be an opportunity for my mother. We tried under major thirty-seven and got approval, and under major forty-nine, it was taken away, and that's because my parents had a private contract back in the sixties, and they didn't get it into the record until the early seventies, which was, is supposed to be in the county record, and so, so major forty-nine, the state took that back. But, so we thought we could get it in there. It's just a very small buildable portion that's contiguous with this down in that corner there. I realize, I, I just thought of it late, and, and so I understand that the city would want more proof that that's a real place, but the Rocks property has been before the city for, oh, gosh, a year and a half now. Tim Rock, the son of John and Avon Rock, sent me a note late last night. He is such a busy man. He, he couldn't make the hearing today, but he did send me a couple of notes that he wanted me to make out, make a point about. One is the access issue. The city doesn't seem to understand that access is not an issue. There, there's a piece of code in the city's, a section in the city's code that requires that access be made to adjacent properties when development happens. And so at the time that this property, an application is made, that would have to show access to the Rocks property, to my mother's property, because we're doing, we need maintenance, and we're doing a real push right now to reduce the fire fuel load, and we can't really get across the creek, and we need it from that side. The city's going to need access to their properties in the ravine there, so they can perform maintenance and serve emergency crews as well. The city doesn't seem to understand that access is already mandated. That's not going to be an issue with the Rocks property. The other point that Tim Rock wanted me to make was that the county, I don't think I gave you that, but you might remember, the, the last, last year, the, the county, you were in favor of the city assisting the Rocks with their property and bringing it into the city, and one of the points was negotiating with the developer on that, and Tim had been talking to the developer and trying to get some direction from the city as far as doing a survey, whether they wanted that or not, and you probably heard the planner say that he thinks a survey is necessary, but the, the counselors said, no, that's not what they were worried about, they were worried about access. So, you know, it would be wasting money to, to do a survey in advance of any positive direction from the city. So what he, what him had been doing was talking to the developer's engineer, and he asked for more time in March to continue that, and then the city said no. So I want, he wanted you to know that they were not following the paragraph that you put into your approval. You know, they were not providing any assistance with getting them some access. Those are the points I wanted to make.
Thank you. Mr. Jacks, would you address the safety concerns that were just brought up?
Well, those would be something addressed at the time of a development. What the city did earlier this year was change the zone from R1 to R2, and so at the time that the property is proposed for development, that is when, at the time the property is proposed for development, presumably with a subdivision, then that would be an issue to be addressed. One of the issues, I think, is the idea that there was a cul-de-sac coming down, just one way in, and then if there's a fire or whatever, only one way out. Well, in some cases, that's what you end up needing to do, is have one way in and one way out. The state fire code has some regulations about how long a cul-de-sac could be, and if there, if it's over a certain distance, then you need a turnaround or a hammerhead, and of course, that was provided in the previous subdivision that wasn't built because of the recession, and presumably, if that was the plan, then it would meet the state fire code. Certainly, a developer could try to put a loop road around there, but that, in the middle, the high ground, the previous subdivision had a cul-de-sac coming down here, and that's about all you can do, because there's a steep slope going down this way, and a steep slope coming down this way. So if you tried to put a loop road around, then you wouldn't be able to get houses here because it's too steep and not enough space. You'd have Aurora houses in the middle, and probably no houses over here because it's steep and not enough depth for a typical lot. So I think in the future, there's going to be another cul-de-sac coming down here, and that's, you know, not unheard of, it's pretty typical when you run into these kinds of situations. Not all properties are the right size and shape to allow a loop road to come down here. I guess in terms of the fire concern and being able to get people out, that is what I would respond with. As to being able to get fire equipment in, if any of this area, and there's other parts of Lafayette, I assume many other parts of cities throughout the state that have tree areas along creeks, and many times you have a road with lots backing up, and I'm not aware that it's a real standard operation to have, for example, one lot removed and have a public access for fire equipment to get to the tree area. It's one of those things that, I don't know how best it could be addressed, but certainly, you know, all cities, you know, most cities probably have these kinds of situations, and if a fire needs to be fought, then presumably the engine in this built-in situation would come up on the street, and they would go through the side guard with their hoses, and if any aerial equipment is available, then that would no doubt be used to help fight fire, but these kinds of tree areas, even if it's a city park that's heavily tree, sometimes those are going to present a problem if there's a forest fire.
Well, like you said, there's, there's codes to the length of roads or the cul-de-sacs, the turnarounds, fire hydrants. That's the other thing you have to keep in mind, when you have these, these trees, kind of forested areas inside of cities, you're not talking about a water tender running out to foothills of Yam Hill to try to fight a fire. You're close to the fire department, you've got hydrants there, and you've got quick response. So you're not talking about, and with all the eyes on this, you're not talking about a wildfire getting away from you. This is a very contained area, so I think that's one of the reasons that, that it's been so popular. Anytime you can back up to a forested area, especially in the city, it's, it's, you know, highly sought after. And I don't remember, you know, in McMinnville, which we have, this is the tree city, right? We have a lot of those type of conditions, and I don't ever remember that being a problem, but I do remember the requirements needed for that. I don't remember if it's five hundred feet or whatever it is to, to have to have the turnaround, but that's specifically what those are set up for, for fire trucks, and that's one of the reasons I'm not a big proponent of the, the twenty-six-foot roads and smaller roads, because it just makes it more difficult for, not only emergency vehicles, but garbage, you know, any kind of thing that goes back to FedEx, the mail, becomes more difficult. And, and the other situations, you're not saving any land. You know, they think that if you, you know, the mindset is if you, if you narrow the street, you save some more land and you can make more lots, and that's not true. It becomes part of a landscape strip. So in this particular condition, I would make, you know, and it, and it will come to the point where the developer will come in and, and kind of deal with the council planning department, but that should be a fairly wide road, maybe a thirty footer. Thirty foot's very generous, you can get all kinds of people in and out of a thirty footer. So if you have any concerns, it's a matter of just simply laying down another four to six feet of asphalt going down those locations.
And I might note that even though the comment is about this property in here, the Paddock property, the Rock property, any houses in this area, very heavily tree, no fire hydrants nearby, the Abbey Ridge subdivision, the western part of it here, the public right-of-way for John's Landing Road ends down here at this Tributary Creek, and then there's a narrower private road coming up here, but there's trees all around these houses, and so if there's concern about what might happen here, where there's only trees on the sides, then situations like this should really have some attention paid to them, because those houses are in the forest rather than on the edge of the forest in a area that doesn't have trees.
Madam Chair, if, if I'm not mistaken, what we're being asked to look at right now is the approval of the land, the UGB. The issues that we're talking about here are more concerned with the development of that land after the UGB's in place. I do think that the city should be working with all of their citizens and their adjacent landowners to make certain that these things are being addressed, but I don't think that what we're doing here today is just to look at the additional land and make sure that the UGB meets the requirements of LCDZ, so.
I appreciate that. Well, just one more comment, though. Carol Paddock mentioned that one of the things that we put in those conditions was for the city to work with the Rocks, and I know it seemed at the time a little nebulous, because it's one of those things where it's very subjective, you know, work with, work with this, this individual and trying to, to mitigate some of the, the concerns, and so it seemed like it was just so vague that there was really nothing that we, we could, we could apply to that condition other than what we did, and now we're hearing that perhaps maybe that's not the case. So taking what Commissioner Formisit said in terms of what we're tasked with doing here today, I would also just want to comment about that part of it, that apparently, at least from their perspective, that they're not being heard.
Well, I know that I've not been contacted by Tim Rock, the adult son, or Mr. and Mrs. Rock, the elderly parents, to participate in any meetings with the developer-owned property to the east. I'm not sure if they've contacted the city, the city manager, or anyone there, but at least from my perspective, I know I've not been contacted, I've not been asked to do any background work or do any checking for any issues. It may be that Tim or someone representing the Rocks have contacted the property owner or AKS Engineering, that's the engineering firm that has been involved, but certainly, I'd be available if I were contacted to participate in some kind of a meeting to try to identify the issues and see what could be done, even though the access issue has been described today as not a big deal, but when you get to the point of a city code requirement saying development of land needs to provide access to abutting properties, then the subdivision comes in, and the city says, okay, we have this city code requirement, and the developer says, well, if we follow that, I'm going to lose two lots, and the developer may know about the Dolan versus City of Tigard case and the rough proportionality issues related to improvements and so forth, and they may say, well, if you're going to make me lose two lots, then I'm going to contend that one or more of my rights are contend that one or more of my rights are being violated irrespective of the code requirement." Sometimes there are code requirements in a city or even a county set of regulations that cannot be enforced due to Supreme Court decisions. For example, if the city has a sign regulation and says, "The city gets to control the content of a sign," that regulation cannot be enforced, because it's not consistent with the Constitution and Supreme Court decisions about not, the local government's not being able to control content. So, I don't know how the city's requirement would play out in a specific subdivision. But certainly, that could be identified as one of the issues, and try to, you know, have as much discussion as possible between the Rocks or their son, and the property owner to the east, and AKS Engineering, as well as the city.
If I remember correctly, too, when we, when we placed that paragraph in there, wasn't this a 40-acre piece at one time that we were discussing?
Yeah.
My memory serves me right. Forty acres.
Yeah, the 40-acre piece is here, and then this 20-acre piece.
But, no, I'm talking about the, that Rock piece. When we were discussing it, that was, I don't know if it was 40 or whatever. It's quite a bit of acreage. Six acres?
Yeah, six or seven acres, and it comes out here to Mineral Springs Road.
Right, okay. And so, that's a much bigger issue, I feel like we were addressing with that paragraph, than then, than this, this little, this little outcropping they're asking for now. It's a total different thing to me. I don't think the city has a requirement to go in there and survey a little piece that you'd like to, to look at. I think it's, it's upon the owners to, to move forward with that kind of a request, and, and timing and investment. I certainly, if I was going to develop a little piece like that and kind of tag it onto this, I would, I would think that, I wouldn't be looking for the city to come in and survey and take care of all that. I would be proactive. So, to me, when we were talking a year or so ago about this piece, and talking about the cooperation between the two, it was when the whole piece was being considered. So, to me, that's different.
That was a separate parcel of land we were discussing. The Rocks is a whole separate issue. You just brought that up in addition to what you were saying, and I, and I wanted to just address that. So, I'm not putting the two together. I was just saying that that had been one of the issues, one of the conditions, and I wanted to know if there had been, in fact, no cooperation or, you know, even efforts at cooperation with the city.
Would you like to address that?
Yes, and I think, but I think to Commissioner Primisic's point, that what we're tasked with today is really just approving or not this UGB addition. So, but yeah, just wanted...
Tim Rock and I did meet with the city manager, I don't have a date for you, to discuss this and have an approach to the city council, what it was they were looking for, that kind of thing we did. And then, at the city council meeting, Tim had been talking to the engineer, and had simply asked for more time to continue talking to the engineer. And that was denied. You know, they went ahead and approved the, the boundary, sending it to you that night. As far as the property, the property survey, the Rocks had said they, they're happy with the whole lot going in, the six acres, or several of the elevations, lines, for instance, or direction from the city as to what they would want to see brought in, and then they would do the survey.
Okay, thank you. So, so we do, do we have a motion?
I would, I would move to approve the application for the UGB amendment as presented in the draft from the planning department.
Is there anybody else here who wants to make public comment for or against?
Okay, no other further comment. We have a motion to, to approve this. Is there any further discussion and perhaps maybe weigh-in from staff on this? Any, any other comments at this point? Okay, all right. So, at this juncture, we have a motion to approve a request by the city of Lafayette for the board to adopt Lafayette Ordinance 629, which is a request to expand the Lafayette Urban Growth Boundary by 61.35 acres, and to modify Ordinance 623 as required by the DLCD remand. Any further discussion at this point? All those in favor of approving this request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming, and I, I think this is just a discussion we need to continue to maybe get updates on from the city, so that we can at least know that the conditions that we put on are at least, efforts are being made in that direction. Thanks.
Madam Chair, you didn't close.
Close it.
Okay. This time, we'll close the public hearing on the Lafayette Urban Growth Boundary. Okay. Next, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacks. Next, we have receipt of public comment.
And to open another public hearing?
And a public hearing for the request by Friends View Manager to issue the revenue bonds in a maximum aggregate principle not to exceed the amount $50 million for the purpose of refinancing prior debt obligations and financing additional projects.
So, Madam Chair, this is a hearing to receive comment. At the end of the hearing, the decision for the board will be whether or not to approve the request. The statute requires the governing body to approve the final issuance of the bonds. So, I don't know if there's anyone. John, did you have anything you wanted to say at this point, or?
I don't, unless there are any questions, we can just have a public hearing, public comment hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else here who would like to make a public comment about this?
All right. Well, hearing none at this point. We'll close the public hearing and consideration of the board order approving the issuance of the Senior Living Revenue and Refunding Bond Series 2016 Friends View Retirement Community. And so, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes. Yeah, so moved. And with the idea of the $50 million maximum and a fee that's attached to, not attached to the $30 million that's refied, but only to the $15 million of new money.
Or more.
Whatever is the new, whatever is the new money.
At this, at this point, it's $15 million new money.
Okay.
Yeah, the final amount of the fee would be set at closing.
Right.
All right. We have a motion to, to approve the board order approving the issuance of the refunding bond series 2016. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any announcements at this time? I just want to say that we have equipment and personnel from Yam Hill County that are helping to fight the fire in Sisters at Billy Shenick Lake, and also, there's another fire, another wildfire at the Oaihe Canyon, hundreds of thousands of acres. So, it looks like we're, we've begun our wildfire season. But just, just some thoughts going out to our personnel who are over there fighting from Yam Hill County. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, anything else for the good of the order?
Thanks, K O Y C. Recording again for us. Appreciate it, Dave.
Yes, thank you, Dave. All right, well, appreciate everybody being here at this time. We'll close the Yam Hill County Board of Commissioners' formal session. It's 10:45.